Republic, which stands one nation, and with God indivisible, third here just for.
Alrighty. We have a couple of presentations. The first one being our animal control officer, Ms. Shannon Hamilton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. With the mindset of improving services for our community, the police department delegates animal-related calls for service to the animal warden. This allows sworn police officers to concentrate on other police functions and allows for a highly trained person to coordinate police response to the animal-related calls for service. In 2017, we had 506 dispatch runs for animal calls, 553 self-initiated activities, 392 stray animals, 38 vicious animals, 165 dogs and cats taken to our animal shelter, 35 animal bite incidents, 268 animals impounded, 120 reports, 126 violations issued, two warrants requested, 256 warning and advisements issued, and 31 rabia investigations and 330 dead animal pickups. This is a critical position within our police department. I'm here before you today to introduce our newest animal warden, ACO Shannon Hamilton. I'll step aside and...
(applause).
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Just tell you a little bit about myself. I've been in law enforcement for quite many years, 18 to be exact. I've worked for Oakland County Sheriff's Office before I accepted this position as part-time patrol deputy. I live out west of here in the city of Pinckney with my four kids and my husband. I own and operate Hidden Creek Farm, horse farm, where I train people how to ride horses and board horses and train horses in my free time when I'm not working. I enjoy very much spending time with my family and obviously training horses. We have all kinds of animals on the farm, chickens, goats, pigs, emus, handled various animals. I have dogs at home myself, so I'm very happy to work for the city of Southfield.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[217.81][217.81](applause). Welcome aboard, and as the Assistant Acting Chief indicated, there's a lot of work to be done here in the city of Southfield with respect to animal control, and we're glad you're here and hope you enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to come around and just shake everybody's hand and...
Does she need to be sworn in?
I handle that.
Oh, they're already taking care. Okay.
(laughing).
Can horses be ordered?
I have nobody.
Thank you.
Please you ask for the horses, yes.[277.83][277.83](applause).
The next item will be a joint resolution, Southfield Day of Peace and Healing. I will join the mayor.
And I would like to call up Pastor Ovella Davis. Oh.[300.12][300.12](laughing). Good evening. We have a long history in Southfield, particularly through the ages of our Martin Luther King Task Force of advocating nonviolence and tolerance for differences in all people. And so this evening, Council President Brightwell and myself are here to present a joint council-mayor resolution, Southfield Day of Peace and Healing. It's the 22nd day of each month, and so if I may read the resolution, and then I'd ask for the pastor to say a few words certainly. So whereas the United Communities of America is a nonprofit community organization founded by Pastor Ovella Davis with a mission to reduce crime through the promotion of peace, healing, and positive change, one community at a time, and whereas the United Communities of America focuses its efforts and initiatives that help create a greater consciousness regarding violence and the reduction of crime with an emphasis on those who have been victims of violence, and whereas each 22nd day since October 2010, the United Communities of America invites families that have experienced the loss of a loved one to gather together to receive encouragement and spiritual healing, they may attain peace. And so whereas joining the churches, businesses, students, and schools to show a peaceful way to resolve conflict, the United Communities of America promotes its motto, united we stand, together we can, we have a plan. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby declare each 22nd day of 2018, Southfield Day of Peace and Healing in the city of Southfield. And it's dated this date and signed by each council member and myself. Pastor Davis?
Thank you.[482.25][482.25](applause).
Congratulations. Good morning. Thank you. I thank the council, thank you mayor, I thank the city of Southfield. This is an ongoing initiative that we started in Detroit in 2010 with the increase of violence, and we were trying to find a way to create a new consciousness to communities that are in crisis. And we've decided to implement a day of peace that we could ask everyone, every citizen, to participate, just like we know Thanksgiving is a day that we have dinner, we want everyone to know, and the 22nd is a day that we want to become conscious about being peaceful. And this is not just for those that are engaged in violence, it's for each human being, every person, that if we could circle our calendars on the 22nd and decide to make it a day of peace in our circle of influence, that eventually we can reach every person with the idea that let's make a more peaceful life by having a more peaceful day. So we have now, Southfield is our 10th city, and I'm very happy, our goal is to create a no-violence day across America every 22nd. And so this is the beginning of a journey that we have started in 2010, and we're very happy to be here in Southfield. I am a resident of Southfield as well, and (applause) and our next assignment is we have a program called Students for Peace that has stopped violence in four schools, and our goal is to bring this program to Southfield, but first we needed to make sure that we all were on what accord with the citywide Day of Peace and Healing. So I thank you. Every 22nd, make it a day of peace. God bless.[587.16][587.16](applause).
Yes.
Good job.
Sure. Please.
Want to stand, you guys?
Yeah, stand so they can get you in a picture here.
Everybody's standing just for...
Oh, go to the next room. Go to the next room. Yes. I should first thank the mayor for this support.
Yeah, we have. We have people.
Yes.
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 Do you want to thank us?
I got to.
Need to get up.
Yes, that's next.
Yes, thank you.
Don't get me any back. I wrote it, I guess. Should I read this?
No.
Yeah.
I don't have that either.
You don't? Didn't you get this?
No.
So, thank you Pastor Davis once again.[670.16][670.16](applause). It's a noble cause, and we certainly need more peace in the world, without question. So next we have another resolution, and this is a great pleasure for the council and myself to recognize Danielle Hughes. So Danielle?[694.41][694.41](applause).
Hello.
Hello. We're always proud of our own, and so we're extremely proud of you, and we're very glad to have this proceeding this evening before the Southfield City Council and our audience. So I understand that you went through the Southfield Public Schools and have now distinguished yourself with national recognition from Forbes magazine. So let me read this. Joint Resolution and Recognition of Danielle Hughes. Whereas Ms. Danielle Hughes is a lifelong resident of the city of Southfield, and whereas Ms. Danielle Hughes has been named to the Forbes 30 Under 30 List in the education category, and whereas (applause), we can keep the applause coming. Whereas Forbes 30 Under 30 for Education are individuals named due to their vision for the future and for bringing access and opportunity to the classroom and beyond. And whereas Ms. Danielle Hughes shows her dedication to the youth through her work with her nonprofit organization Detroit Speaks Incorporated, and whereas Ms. Hughes' dedication to helping the youth of our community increase their social awareness, responsibility, and community involvement shows her commitment to the future of our community's youth, and whereas Ms. Danielle Hughes has countlessly illustrated her commitment to the youth through her after-school programs, community cleanup, and three months Emerging Leaders Course. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and city council, the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize and commend Danielle Hughes for her work in the community. Dated the 17th day of September 2018, Danielle.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.[830.62][830.62](applause).
Oh, absolutely.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So my name is Danielle D. Hughes. As he said, you have to say the D or I won't come up in a Google search. I'm a proud product of McIntyre Elementary School, Bernie Middle School, and Southfield Lathrop High School. I was, got my first job from Southfield Parks and Rec, and I was also fired from my first job at Southfield Parks and Rec.[854.12][854.12](laughing). So I can say that that made me the person that I am today. The city of Southfield made me. I've had some of the best times of my life in the city of Southfield, and some of the times that truly made me who I am, because they weren't the best times. I truly have to say, all of my family and friends who are here, you all have played an integral role in me becoming who I am and my journey, and I'm so grateful to God for all of you and for everyone coming to support, and I'm looking forward to seeing more of you.[880.51][880.51](applause).
I know everyone is surprised to see me standing here, but this is my baby.[884.81][884.81](laughing). She grew up down the street from me. I've known her since she was riding a tricycle, so I wouldn't, I couldn't have her share this moment without me being here with her to let her know how proud I am of her and all of the accomplishments that she had. I wrote down a few, but most of them have already been stated, but she's also one of the region's most recognizable Millennials for Youth Advocacy and Empowerment. This lady is also the Dream Director for Future Projects, and she is the co-founder of Detroit Speaks Incorporated. She's an entrepreneur and a humanitarian. She's a great person, and she is born and raised here in Southfield.[926.31][926.31](applause).
Yes.
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 Let me get you guys right here real quick. Three, two, one.[1001.12][1001.12](applause).
Did she graduate from Southfield?
Hi there, I'm sorry. Hey, thank you.
2009.
She's having a dream there.
2009.
Brittany McIntyre.
She went to McIntyre, then SL.
Oh, it's good.
I've practiced that for a long time.[1012.12][1012.12](laughing).
Yes.
I started to say, "Oh, it's good."[1015.12][1015.12](laughing).
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Southfield's fantastic.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. I can say, shout out to somebody famous.
Oh, no.[1025.12][1025.12](laughing).
And she's under 30-year-old?
Yes.
Yeah, that's rare.
Yeah.
Because I, somewhere I seen her picture, and I can't remember, I can't remember, but here, I know I get to cranes, I get to D business.
That's my baby.
Ladies like that.
Are you going to Atlanta?
She is beautiful, too. She's a model. She's gorgeous.
You're going to LA?
Oh, yeah, you're going to...
Okay, we will resume where we left off. We will now have a presentation to Ms. Rochelle Freeman, our very able business development director.
Mr. President, President, Honorable Counsel, Mayor, Madam Clerk, this evening, as city administrator, every day I hear something great that's happened in the city of Southfield. This evening I have with me is Monique Holiday Beatty. She's president of the Michigan Economic Developers Association. She's also a Southfield resident. She serves on our Brownfield Board, and she is our, part of our Detroit Edison Field Team rep, and I've asked her to come in tonight to present a couple of awards that were presented to our very own Rochelle Freeman at last month's annual meeting of the Michigan Economic Developers Association. Monique?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's my absolute honor to stand before you today. As Fred said, I'm a Southfield resident. It's been 34 years that I've been here, so it's a wonderful place. Like he mentioned, I'm the 2018 Michigan Economic Developers Association President, and I just wanted to give you a little information about the group. It's also known as MEDA. MEDA has been the leading voice in economic development for over 50 years within the state of Michigan, and our members consist of those who strive to build and retain investment in the state. I'm privileged this evening to present the 2018 MEDA Medalist Award and the Robert Seegerd Award to the city of Southfield's Economic and Business Development Director, Rochelle Shelley Freeman.[1184.01][1184.01](applause). The MEDA Medalist Award is MEDA's highest honor, and it identifies outstanding contributions to economic developers within the state. Recipients of this award have demonstrated commitment to their profession as well as dedication and growth to their communities and a proven record of success. The Robert Seegerd Award for Enthusiasm for Economic Development Professionals recognizes someone who has established MEDA and understands the importance of economic development to all communities as well as on the state level. Mrs. Freeman's contributions in the field of economic development and to the city of Southfield are extensive. She was instrumental in the city of Southfield's renewable, renewal of the Redevelopment Ready Community Certification by the MEDC. She's also recently helped Southfield to achieve Oakland County's One Stop Ready Certification. Mrs. Freeman was closely involved with the establishment of Southfield's Second Smart Zone, and that's known as the Southfield Centropolis, a campus for innovation, knowledge sharing, and growth that helps second-stage startups and intrapreneurs accelerate their companies to the next level. Centropolis is a collaboration between the cities, as you know, LTU Collaboratory and Lawrence Technological University, that aims to increase business success, employment throughout the city and surrounding areas. Mrs. Freeman helped to create over $244 million in investment and capital growth within your great city. Those companies include Denzo123.net, Como, Vineer, Credit Acceptance, and Stefanini, excuse me. These investments are expected to create over 1,250 jobs within the city over the next three to five years, and that's something to be applauded.[1328.76][1328.76](applause). We're also thankful for Mrs. Freeman that she takes the time to prepare and give back to other future leaders within the economic development profession. She mentors our Emerging Leaders Team, and she's led those leaders through MEDA's Get Hired for a Day program. I'd like to invite Shelley Freeman up here to receive her awards and congratulate her.[1358.51][1358.51](applause).
Thank you so much. I truly was just so taken aback when they announced these awards at our annual conference at MEDA. I've been a longtime member of MEDA and been working for over 25 years in the field of community and economic development, and it was just such a proud moment for me. I really enjoy working with Fred and the entire team here at the city of Southfield. It's a great atmosphere to work for, and it really helps when you have a strong people that, a strong community that I can really help sell. And so it's just been a real pleasure over all the years to help promote this community and bring new business and new energy to the city of Southfield. So I truly appreciate it, and we have outstanding community members that participate in our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and all of our boards, and so it's just a joy coming to work every day. So I was, I was just really taken aback. It was just amazing. So I do appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rochelle.[1432.12][1432.12](applause). We're glad to have you on board, and clearly you've done a fantastic job. And I want to, I want to apologize to our listening audience and also to our audience here in chamber for, we started a little late because we were in discussion, discussions in our study session, planning session. So I apologize for that, but items need to be covered, and when they are, we try to fully, fully discuss those items and make sure they are ready for, for a vote. So the next item on our agenda...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I, I just want to get a picture, Shelley, with you and Monique holding you. You didn't hold your plaque forward for us, so I just want to...
You're standing right in front of the podium, I guess.
Standing in front of the podium.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Morris working for the sun, now.
No, I'm, no.
I'm just joking.
You guys are great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, we will deal with meeting minutes. Counsel, can I get a...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve the regular meeting of, the minutes for the regular meeting of August 13, 2018.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported that we approve the minute of August 13, 2018. Counsel, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The minutes are approved as presented. We will now go into the consent agenda items, and I would like to remind our listening audience that I will only give a summary of the consent agenda items, and I do recommend that you go to the city clerk's page and look up council meetings, and you will see a full write-up of every item that I will cover here, and I will only give a brief background in the fiscal impact of these particular items. The first item is the agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County for the water, for the winter road maintenance 2018-2019. A little background, the Department of Public Works entered into an agreement with the Road Commission in the fall of 2001 to perform snow and ice removal on three county roads, that's 10-mile road, 12-mile roads, and Lotsa Road. The agreement supports the city goal to continue providing high-level service to residents and to help ensure the safe patches on all our major streets within the city during inclement weather by covering a portion of the major, major street system under the auspices of the Road Commission of Oakland County, which is approximately, which is 22.2 miles of the 61.5 total miles in the, in the city of Southfield. The fiscal impact of this particular item will be, with the council authorization of the agreement, Oakland County will remit to Southfield $105,910.36 for the winter road maintenance, that's snow and ice removal services. This figure reflects a 2% increase over the 2017-2018 allocation. Consent Agenda Item B, Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Development and Reimbursement Agreement for the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Project, 2018 request to set public hearing date of, to October 15, 2018. The administration would like to make a presentation relative to the adopt, to the adoption of a Brownfield Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan on behalf of the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Project 2018. three county roads, that's ten-mile road, twelve-mile roads, and lots of road. The agreement supports the city goal to continue providing high-level service to residents and to help ensure the safe patches on all our major streets within the city during inclement weather by covering a portion of the major street system under the auspices of the Road Commission of Oakland County, which is approximately, which is twenty-two point two miles of the sixty-one point five total miles in the city of Southfield. The fiscal impact of this particular item will be, with the council authorization of the agreement, Oakland County will remit to Southfield one hundred and five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and thirty-six cents for the winter road maintenance, that's snow and ice removal services. This figure reflects a two percent, two percent increase over the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen allocation. Consent agenda item B, Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Development and Reimbursement Agreement for the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Project, two thousand and eighteen request to set public hearing date of October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The administration would like to make a presentation relative to the adoption of a Brownfield Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan on behalf of the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Project, two thousand and eighteen. The Brownfield Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan allows the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation to begin efforts that will result in the revitalization of primarily thirty-five residential zoned properties and twelve vacant lots, and ultimately enhance the city tax base and will allow the city to create a Brownfield Resolving Loan Fund for future environmental site remediation and demolition. A public hearing is scheduled for Monday, October fifteenth, for, October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, for a Brownfield Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan as proposed by the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, and a Tax Increment Financing Plan, a Public Act three eighty-one of nineteen ninety-six as amended. The property to which this plan applies includes forty, forty-seven parcels. Consent agenda item C, the approval of the DTE Energy Foundation Tree Planting Grant Program administered by the Department of Natural Resources, Urban Forestry Program. A little bit of background, the planning department is seeking the approval of the city of Southfield to adopt the two thousand and eighteen DTE Energy Foundation Tree Planting Grant and enter into an inter-agency agreement with the Department of Natural Resources to benefit from a tree planting grant in Southfield. The fiscal impact of this particular item is the DTE grant total requested was three thousand dollars. Two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars was, has been awarded. The city of Southfield match amounts to four thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars for a total budget, project budget of six thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. The city of Southfield will be responsible for the purchase and planting of twenty-two The trees will be installed at the Catawba Oaks Park. Southfield will be reimbursed for the trees once they have been planted. Consent agenda item D, resolution authorizing the street name change of First Center Drive to Beaumont Boulevard. Background, Beaumont Health purchased the property previously known as First Center Office Plaza at two six nine oh one Northwestern Highway in two thousand and seventeen. The property now known, the property now known as Beaumont Service Center is the home of the administrative employees and will serve as the training and conference hub for Beaumont Health. Beaumont Health has requested a formal street name change of First Center Drive to Beaumont Boulevard. First Center Drive is part of the city major street network, though no properties currently utilize the street as frontage, so no address change will be required. The estimated cost of switching out the sign is two thousand and fifty dollars. Beaumont will be invoiced for this amount. Consent agenda item E, liquor license request Hospitality Ventures Management, CY Detroit LLC, doing business as Courtyard by Marriott, which is located at two seven zero seven Northwestern Highway. Attention is an application from Hospitality Venture, CY Detroit LLC, DBA, Courtyard by Marriott. They are requesting a transfer of ownership of a B hotel liquor license located at two seven zero two seven Northwestern Highway. All the necessary documents and approval have been received from the required city departments. A representative from Courtyard will be present to answer any questions as they may arise. Consent agenda item F, wage adjustment for the Deputy City Treasurer. Ms. Catherine Hicks has served as the Deputy City Treasurer since March of two thousand and fifteen. At the recent council meeting, council approved the appointment of a new Deputy City Treasurer, Ms. Allison Beatty. Let me just follow, indicate, Ms. Hicks had over twenty-nine years of service with the city of Southfield, and she's scheduled to retire later this week. At a recent council meeting, city council approved the appointment of Deputy City Treasurer, Allison Beatty. Ms. Beatty has a successful, has successfully completed the background investigation necessary for this position, and will start employment with the city on October one, two thousand and eighteen. Ms. Beatty was hired at a salary of seventy-seven thousand five hundred, and we're moving to eighty-one thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars with a five percent wage increase typically provided after a successful completion of the job introduction period. While Ms. Beatty is highly qualified and knowledgeable about municipal operations and the function required of a city treasurer, having handled these and other functions at the forgotten city, the complex nature and system of Southfield Treasurer Office will require a certain learning curve. It is vitally important in the treasurer's office in the city that there be a smooth transition in its key appointment. We have asked Ms. Hicks to consider extending her employment for an additional two months in order to help guide Ms. Beatty through the activities and procedures unique to Southfield, to the Southfield Treasurer's Office. Ms. Hicks extended present will also be helpful in that two other positions in the treasurer's office are currently vacant. In asking, in asking Mrs. Hicks to consider extending her employment to assist the city in this transition, we recognize that her salary of seventy-five thousand seven hundred and twenty is significantly below that of Ms. Beatty, and will earn after completion of the job introduction. In fairness, we quest, we request that council approve a lump sum non-pensionable payment for Ms. Hicks of seven thousand five hundred dollars in recognition of her agreement to remain on staff until November twenty-eight, November thirty, two thousand and eighteen, to train employees, to create procedures, manuals for documentation of vital and unique procedures, and provide general support during this transition. The fiscal impact, the lump sum payment of seven thousand five hundred is non-pensionable. Funds are available, funds are available in the Treasury Department budget within the General Fund. That is the extent of the consent agenda...
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda items A through F.
Support. A move by Mrs. Morris, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum.
Point of order.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes, item B, I would think that there's a total of thirty-five parcels, not forty-seven. I know the write-up said forty-seven, but when it was explained in our study, it was the twelve vacant lots are part of the thirty-five.
Okay, all right, sole corrected. You make the motion with those corrections?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through F with the modification of the stated parcels from forty-seven to thirty-five.
All right, it's been ruled by Ms. Morris and it was supported by Mr. Mandelbaum that we approve consent agenda items A through F with the suggested, with the recommended changes in item B. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the consent agenda items are approved. Okay, we will now move into public communications. The first to be recognized is Mr. Mason, Mr. Richard Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Clerk. My name is Richard Mason. I wanted the opportunity to come before you and introduce myself. I am the new owner of Burn Hookah on Northwestern Highway. So I want to give you an extensive view of my background. I am a single, full-time father raising two teenage girls by myself, ex-military. I served at the two-third, I did my, my reserve at the three-twenty-third Reserve in the city of Southfield. My background, I have undergrad in engineering, computer engineering, I have an MBA in strategic management, and I also have a theological degree in ministerial leadership. I was a manager at General Motors for fifteen years. I've also held executive director positions and regional director positions for other companies. I also operate a company called Visions Consulting Group, where I've gone throughout the state of Michigan and outside of the state of Michigan, starting companies for other individuals. I go into companies that are not profitable, and I help them become profitable, or I go into companies that are failing and help them become successful. I did that through my extent while I was inside the GM also, General Motors also. I am fully aware of the previous history with the company, and I've did my due diligence, due diligence, I've done my research to find out the things that took place then, why they took place, the mindset behind the people that, in those incidents. Also, some of the controversy that happened within that business before I took my step into the business. I, and four years ago, I left General Motors to pursue my career full-time in entertainment. I'm, right now, I am, I'm a, I act, I'm auto, I'm on, whether it's Joe Porter, Bell Tire, Hungry Highways, I'm on your TVs every single day. I am one of the hosts of the TV show We Love Detroit, where we highlight different businesses throughout the metro Detroit to try to give a positive view of the city as the city is coming back in the metro Detroit, metropolitan areas coming back, we highlight those cities. So my reputation is very, very valuable to me, and my reputation with you all is very, very valuable. And it means a lot that I not only represent myself, but I represent the city very, very well. I know, according with the previous history, that the businesses, the community grew tired and didn't want that business. And I come before you presenting myself, asking for a new set of eyes and the same opportunity that you would give any other business member coming into your community. Sorry for all the stumbling words.
Well, thank you. Is that, is that it? Okay.
And I did want to ask if there's any issues or concerns that you would want to present to me that I can be in the forefront of my mind and as we move forward together.
We will, we will communicate with you if things come up.
I really appreciate that.
And I'm assuming the clerk has your, your address.
Yep, okay.
And as a new business here, we want you to be successful. We will do what we need to do as a, as a city to make sure you're successful, like we would for any business here in the, in the city.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you now.
Welcome.
The next person, Ms. Gerald.
And it's not a new business he took over an existing business, is what he told you. If I heard you correctly, Mr. Mason, okay, thank you. Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven, dash, zero one five five. The city of Southfield is predominantly African-American. Unfortunately, the population dominance does not reflect the percentage ratio of population versus African-Americans in leadership. On August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, Sue Ward finally retired. Sue Ward waited a long time to get the appointment to become the city of Southfield attorney. If you guys remember, Jack Barris unfortunately got ill. He was able to keep his position as well as get his same full pay that he got as a city attorney while he was off work for all those years, and may he rest in peace because he passed away. And he was never put on disability or sick leave, he was just out. So now flash forward, we have Sue Ward as the city attorney. Sue Ward leaving did not really put the city in a situation where we could do a national search. We did a very narrow search, only through the Michigan Municipal League and the National League of Cities. And this basically was a sixty-day search, hire, or sixty-day search, interview, and hire? This is preposterous. Now I want to remind everybody who this city attorney is, that you guys want, or that the mayor wants. She's Elizabeth Ray O'Donnell. She worked here at the city of Southfield, and she quit in two thousand and thirteen. And just as I thought, the reason she quit was to broaden her horizons and learn more about law. No problem with that. But did the opportunity and the learning stop? And this is why you guys want her to come back? She quit. This is the same city attorney that entered into a consent agreement that broke the ordinances when it came to the buses. That was a huge controversy in the city of Southfield. If you remember a resident, Keith Harris, myself and Keith Harris got up here talking about the fact that this man was allowed to have buses in his backyard, which was a violation of all city ordinances, as it related to trucks being overweight, overweight in the neighborhood, not allowed to crank diesel buses in the neighborhood. This is the same attorney that did that consent agreement. Now you guys need to look at the percentage of African-Americans in leadership in this city. It is virtually none. I'm glad that you decided to postpone the appointment, but I agree with Mr. Frazier, Councilwoman Lenny Taylor, Michael Mandelbaum, Councilwoman Morris, and Cruz. It's the process that's flawed. And don't be rushed to do it next week. Look at some other viable candidates.
The next person to be recognized is Mr. Mullin.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Why is council's search more deliberate for a new police chief than it is for a new city attorney? Let me explain. Both jobs are now vacant. Sad to say, the city attorney's job will be voted on next week, within thirty days of its vacancy, without a national search. And the police chief's job opening is still ongoing with a national search. If we recall, the last time we filled the police chief's vacancy in two thousand and twelve, it took fifteen months with a national search. Why isn't council as careful in searching for a new city attorney as it is as careful in searching for a new police chief? And to top it off, the city attorney makes thirteen point four percent more in wages than the police chief. In a word, please, council, do not rubber stamp the city attorney's selection. Take your time. What's the rush? Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Mrs. Jacob German.
I'm Jake German. I'm here from Donaskus Consulting and Development, and I'm here on behalf of Northwest Labs. Northwest Labs and I are very interested in pursuing an opt-in to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act here in the city of Southfield. It's already been my pleasure to meet some of the members of the council, editor of the Northwest Labs facility at twenty-nine five eighty Northwest Highway. In addition to council members, other key members of the community have also toured the Northwest Labs building, including the outgoing police chief, the city's business risk assessment officer, and the mayor. So I'm here this evening to ask the council to act on this issue sooner rather than later, as it will take several months for proper construction of the new Northwest Labs facility. Furthermore, as you all know from seeing the facility firsthand, no other lab compares to the level of excellence that Northwest Labs will bring to the table. Additionally, I'd like to remind you a bit about the MMFLA. At its most basic form, the act requires a municipality to adopt an ordinance for a medical marijuana facility, which is principally a planning and zoning strategy. The primary objective, then, is to create an ordinance detailing the types of licenses permitted and where said facilities can operate. Our firm has nearly a decade of experience with planning and zoning. With this expertise, we've written several MMFLA model ordinances, and many have been enacted throughout the state of Michigan. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, from the council's perspective, there are also several financial benefits a municipality can gain from opting in. A municipality can collect the traditional fees associated with operating a business, but in addition, they may assess a fee of up to five thousand dollars annually per license. The state will also be collecting an excise tax of three percent. Twenty-five percent of the total funds collected from this excise tax will be dispersed amongst the municipalities who have decided to opt in. Based on the Michigan Senate Fiscal Analysis, they're anticipating this fund to collect twenty-four million dollars in the first year alone. In conclusion, again, it's my pleasure to be here on behalf of Donaskus Consulting and Northwest Labs. and Northwest Labs, who love the city of Southfield and who look forward to pursuing an opt-in for the MMFLA for safety compliance here in the city. I ask that the council act on this issue so that Northwest Labs can begin construction soon, and I thank you all for your kind attention.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Mr. Bonker. Is he present? Not seeing him. Next person would be, is it Ms. Turner? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and other participants on the podium. I've come forward to file a complaint against GFL, who collects the trash and picks up the branches on my street. The concern I have at 21700 Moda Avenue, which is my home, is that I had some branches cut down and brush taken out of my backyard. And I was put on the street to be picked up on August 3rd. It was not picked up on August 3rd. I called the following Monday to find out when they would pick that up, because the trash was collected, and they told me it's picked up on the regular day. So I waited till that Friday. Again, it was not picked up. Long story short, it took three weeks after my calling three times. I have some pictures that I'd like to share with council of what my front lawn looks like now, because as a result of the branches sitting on my lawn for three weeks, my grass died. I was very upset about that, so I ended up calling Streets of Maintenance and spoke to Peggy several times about this. She kept referring me to Justin Beck, who's the supervisor at GFL. He has refused to return my calls, and I am forced to come before city council. Not a complainer, but if you see these pictures of my lawn, you'll understand, I'm a homeowner, I pay my taxes, I pay all my bills, and I really don't have the money to replace something that GFL destroyed on my lawn. So I would ask that city council intervene. I would like sod replaced and not grass seed, because it was not grass seed on my lawn, it was grass and lawn. So I'd like to share these pictures. If someone can take them. Yes. And I just was told that Justin works for the city of Southfield and not GFL, but that was the name and number that she gave me for him, and I called it and left several voicemail messages, and he has failed to return any of my calls. And she told me that she would get in touch with him, and apparently she has not been able to reach him either and leave a message to return my calls, or he's just refusing to. I'm not really sure what's going on.
Okay, well, I think this is an item that we can have the city administrator to look into.
Okay.
And so he will, Mr. Zorn, you will look into this.
Yes, I will look into the matter, and I'd like to speak to my staff about it. Obviously, we'll work to make this correct. We're also still working to bring GFL in on a date, and as recently as Friday, Councilwoman Morris and I were in a phone conversation with Public Works to make that happen.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, next item will be the council portion of the agenda. Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things I'd like to share. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our clerk, Sharika Hawkins, for the Michigan State University Rising Star Award, distinguished alumni honoree. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate the city of Southfield. Verizon voted the city of Southfield fourth placed for the best place to start a business in a small city. And lastly, I'd just like to also ask Mr. Fred Zorn if he would expound, when we get to your area, on the new project that we're working for with customer service and responses called See, Click, and Fix. It's a new and exciting program that we will have rolled out shortly for all of our residents. Thank you.
I think the councilwoman said it very well. It's a new software program to handle customer complaint traction. People can put inputs from various locations, and most importantly, it generates reports as to where we have a higher percentage of complaints. Right now, complaints come in multiple departments. This will kind of give us a central accounting of the complaint tracking and that. As with any software, there is a learning time and a rollout, and there will be some challenges, but we will master that. But we're excited about it.
Chair.
It's Morris.
On behalf of the Neighborhood Services Committee, I'd like to recognize and congratulate Habitat for Humanity for the wonderful neighborhood revitalization work they performed in our city in the month of August and September. This is their third year in a row where they have really worked hard to make a real impact in our neighborhoods. They've helped in terms of minor home repair and landscaping improvements through their program called Rock the Block. And this year, they completed work on 13 homes in the southwest Evergreen neighborhood and seven homes in the Bonnie Acres neighborhood. I want to also thank the over 100 volunteers who helped out, from corporate sponsors to clergy leaders, homeowners. And I also want to thank our city staff, city administrator Fred Zorn, Public Works, as well as our cable department for supporting this event and providing additional resources to help make it a success. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes, I would like to say that last Saturday, I spent pretty much all day long downtown Detroit at a Carmanos Symposium on Prostate Health and Prostate Cancer Health. And I would encourage all men from the age of, and their disparate ages, depends on your race, from 40 on to have a prostate examination and check. Prostate cancer is highly solvable if you get it early enough. I used to be a prostate cancer speaker years ago. I haven't, my skills have sort of waned because I've not been in the speakers bureau. But what I used to tell men is, make your doctor your best friend. Don't make your best friend your doctor. Because a lot of time, men will talk to other men, and when they have some examples of, or some symptoms of aging, they talk to their best friend, and their best friend says, oh, don't worry about that, just getting old. But both the early signs of prostate cancer and aging are very similar. So I used to say, make your doctor your best friend, don't make your best friend your doctor. So I encourage all men to get that done, take care of that. Also, I would like to find out whether or not the front of our building is lit up blue. I know that we lighted it up pink for Breast Cancer Month, and I don't take anything away from women, because that's important. What I do is, I sort of fault men for not taking the active part that women have taken to make it important enough that people have responded. During Breast Cancer Awareness Month, even professional football players are wearing pink shoes. So I mentioned this a couple of years, and I'm going to keep on mentioning it, that we need to elevate prostate cancer to the level of breast cancer, because it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, Councilwoman Taylor and I attended the COSA event that was held here in the pavilion. They had one of their community reach-outs, working with the seniors to try to find ways to make the city a more senior-friendly place. It was a very well-attended event, and I would look forward to attending more of those events and seeing more community involvement as well. This morning, as I was driving my children to school, I noticed a school bus that had its red lights flashing and multiple cars passing it, running stop signs too, which is a whole other issue. But I just want to remind people that when you see a school bus with the flashing red lights, you are not to pass it. Just wait, there's probably children lurking around the corner that you may not see, so please be patient. It's worth waiting the extra 10 to 30 seconds for those lights to come off to ensure that children are safe. At the same time, further down the block, there was a crossing guard helping children cross the street. And again, drivers were in a hurry to either drop their children off at the school or to get to work, do their errands. Please be patient. We don't want to have anyone injured because you had to get somewhere in a hurry. Please make sure you plan enough time to get where you need to go, so you don't need to be in a rush and, besides for violate some traffic laws, injure someone. Recently, we've also, the city has tried a new, is trying something different with our Parks and Rec, and they've sent out a Parks and Rec guide, separate from the Southfield Living. This was something we're trying differently. It's going to be coming out more often, to have more programming when it's needed, give you more options, and try to get the word out a little bit speedier. So I know the city received some calls, I received some calls, some people told me that they may have missed it in the mail, they're expecting the Southfield Living, they may have thought this was, unfortunately, junk mail or something else. And just, you know, we have extra copies here at City Hall, you can come pick up. But we are trying to increase our enrollment in our Parks and Rec programming, so we are trying to have a separate booklet, and we're just trying to make people aware that a separate booklet was mailed out. That being said, there's really, as Councilman Frazier mentioned last week, when unfortunately I was not here, or not last, the last meeting, was that they, he didn't know what events were coming up, since I wasn't here to announce them. But luckily, there's really not much coming up as people are getting ready for back-to-school. But October 1st, general skate at the ice arena does start, so get your skates ready. I know it's funny, we're still in the summer for at least another few days talking about ice skating, but a general skate does start October 1st. And I'd like to ask, through the city administrator, I know Ms. Fields was here earlier, but on Saturdays and Sundays, general skating hours start at 5:00 or 5:30. And for, and somebody already called me, for people with children, sometimes that's already dinnertime, getting ready for the next day. If we can maybe try to have some earlier hours on a Sunday, that may be helpful for some of those families with younger children. Other than that, I'd like to wish all the Jewish residents of Southfield a Happy New Year. It's the Jewish New Year this past week, so Happy New Year to all those residents who are celebrating. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Well, I have a couple announcements also. And I want to hitchhike on what Ms. Taylor brought up about Southfield being the best city for small business. It was ranked right along with Rochester Hill. And Southfield came in fourth, Rochester Hill was eighth, and Novi was 36th. Those three cities were small business friendly. And the items that they measured us on, researchers based their ranking on educational level of the workforce, in-city commute times, income per capita, broadband access, and availability of SBA loans, and tax friendliness. So Southfield is definitely doing things from a business standpoint. There are a couple of items that I want to deal with, make the announcement that September 21, nationwide is the official POW MIA, that's Prisoner of War Missing in Action Day. And there will be ceremonies over at the Oakland Hill Memorial St. Gardens on 12 Mile in Novi. And also, that following day, there will be additional POW MIA ceremonies at the VA Great Lakes National Cemetery in Holly. And on the 26th of September, the 36th District Court, and this is fairly important if our listening audience are veterans who have issues, the 36th District Court is holding a court stand-down to assist the tickets, to assist with tickets and the misdemeanor offenses in the city of Detroit. And that's at the 36th District Court. And I happened to attend a couple of these stand-downs, and veterans can get misdemeanors dismissed on sight. And this goes a long way toward making individuals not necessarily within the judiciary system. And also, on the 26th and 27th, the Southeast Michigan Veterans Stand Down will be held both days at 3606 East Forest Avenue in Detroit. This is another stand-down, and for the veterans who might be listening to me, the ones in our listening audience, whether you're a family member, but the stand-downs are very important. The veterans can get officers, court items taken care of, business items taken care of, they can get medical assistance, and they can get medical treatment. So if you are a family member and you have a veteran, please have them to look into the Veterans Stand Down. That's on Wednesday and Thursday, September 26th and 27th, at 3606 East Forest Avenue in Detroit. All right, seeing no other council item, we will now move to the mayor's portion.
I appreciate Ms. Morris's comments. I was going to speak about the Rock the Block. I did participate in August. Altogether, we had 21 homes, and our residents are very grateful for this help. Many of them are older folks or have difficulty maintaining their yard or the home repairs. We saw a lot of yard cleanup, we saw painting, deck repairs, fence repairs. And again, we're very grateful to the people who supported Habitat as they coordinated this, along with Habitat volunteers, several local businesses, and students from Lawrence Tech came out. This project, the two Rock the Blocks, along with Oakland Rebuilding Together, is something we've been doing for years now, and we're making a difference in the lives of a number of our residents, helping them. And the other thing we see is that it spurs other people in the neighborhood to, yeah, maybe I need to clean up my yard a little bit. So it is contagious. So thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Mr. Administrator?
Yes, once again, our Community Relations Department did win a Savvy Award for our calendar. It's a lot of years in the running, but it was recognized as one of the top publications in the country by their peers as media experts. And the next meeting, I'll probably have my Community Relations Group here. my community relations group here to make a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney. Clerk, madam clerk.
Yes. Real briefly, just wanted to inform the public that on September 7th, our straight party ticket has been eliminated, so what that means is you can't pick a party on your ballot anymore at the top, and then you generally would pick a party, and you would go down to the nonpartisan section. That has been eliminated. What that means for us is that it's going to take longer to do your ballot. We're projecting right now it may take five to seven minutes to complete your ballot. Our ballot will be eight and a half by 17, so it's a pretty large front and back. We're going to have three proposals on our ballot, and I've been getting a lot of questions from residents. Yes means yes and no means no. So a lot of times, yes means no and no means yes, but yes means yes and no means no for the three proposals, and we'll have sample ballots in my office starting on Monday. And again, I just want to encourage all of our voters to pack your patience, do your research ahead of time to know when and how you're going to vote, and that'll make the process more seamless. In August, our primary, we actually had the most voters of all of Oakland County. We had over 21,000 people to vote here in the city of Southfield, so we... County in our efforts, and it looks like we're going to have a record voter turnout in November, and hopefully we'll leave the county again for our proportion of registered voters to the people that actually come out and vote. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, this time around, we will have a ballot for every registered voter. Is that correct?
Right. That's state law.
Okay.
State law states that you have a ballot for every registered voter, and in some precincts will have over 100% of ballots, just because if you have a greater turnout and you have essentially some spoiled ballots, we'll have enough. Yes.
Okay. All right. Did... I'll keep dealing with this. Is the state law, but what happened in the last election, were there just miscalculations by the county?
The state law for primary election speaks that you just have to have a percentage of the ballots per your registered voter. So the director of elections and the county clerk makes the decision what percentage that is.
Okay.
The state law specifies for general elections that every registered voter, there must be a ballot printed out for that.
But did they change that for primaries? Now they're going to have... Is that a local rule? We will have a ballot for every registered voter?
For the... Nothing has been changed per the Michigan law for the primary yet. The county has put together some initiatives, and they promise that what happened in August will not happen again. We're in a lame duck session, so I don't know if the legislators will pick this issue up for this lame duck session, but I've been told that they'll definitely pick it up for 2019, and looking at changing the law for our primaries, specifically in our 2020 primary.
Okay.
For local elections, before you ask me again, for local elections, the clerk actually can order the amount of ballots that you want. You have full jurisdiction for local, so that will be next year. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Treasurer.
Good evening, Colonel Body. I just wanted to echo the feelings of Councilwoman Mandelbaum, and also wish our Jewish residents a Happy New Year, happy and healthy one. Also, to expand on that, it's also the Islamic New Year, and so to all our Islamic residents, also a happy, healthy New Year to you and your families. It's also the Day of Atonement tomorrow evening, so as part of that, I ask, humbly ask everyone, if I may have said or done anything to offend anybody, I ask for forgiveness, and also to let our residents know that we will be sending out in October, the beginning of October, delinquent notices for any taxes that were unpaid for the summer. Unfortunately, we can't forgive that part for the Day of Atonement, but if there's any reason that it was sent to you incorrectly, please notify the Treasurer's Department, and we will research it and try to make sure any corrections are made. Thank you.
Thank you. The assessor, engineer, we have nothing to schedule. We have no ordinances. This meeting is adjourned.
We need to go to closed session? I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
Abort. Abort. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We will go into closed session.
I thought we had to do a roll call.
Madam Clerk, you had to do a roll call for closed session.
Cruz.
Yes.
Fracassi.
Yes.
Frazier.
Yes.
Morris.
Taylor.
Yes.
Amanda Baum.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes.
We're moving to closed session.